They're wet.
Yeah.
County Road 6.
It's my team!
And the rumors were that they were gonna shut it down.
I'm sorry.
But it's just getting bad. It's mostly from the truck.
I know, it's like...
I called Becker and said, "You're not gonna..."
I haven't changed my mind.
Get rigid on this because we've noticed some picking in traffic. He figures once it freezes, they won't have issues.
Well, can I have Keith sign this? I need you to sign this, please.
Sure.
Randy, how are you today?
Wonderful.
Not too bad. Did you tow any cars out of the ditch?
Uh, I'm not... But I know that they are. Yes. It was a good day to be off at 4:30.
Yes. So I'm just gonna get this out there, how many questions I ask tonight shall not be that of Chuck.
Snickers?
Do you have any sneakers? No, I do have a pair of sneakers. When I started taking notes and getting questions ready, I realized we're here July 3rd.
Yeah, that's right.
So we're gonna all give you the eagle eye, yeah.
That's right.
Another question. Thank you for being on time tonight, Keith.
We were getting worried about you.
You know, you'll start getting the nasty text messages, "Where are you?"
I know, I had to get cat food.
Bingo.
Seriously?
I saw that.
You didn't walk? It's seven bucks.
Henderson City Council, Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. It's called Order. First order business is the minutes of the October 23rd, uh, 2024 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I will move to adopt said minutes.
I will make the motion to approve.
I made the motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made, carried. Move into the public hearing. For ordinance 248, amending ordinance 503-03 pertaining to dog ordinances. What specifically is that, Eric?
Pardon me?
What is that?
It's about registering dogs.
Okay.
Rabies and, uh, their new... And it's, we tried to simplify it to make it as easy as possible for someone who just manages it.
And this is the... So this is adopt this ordinance?
Yes.
I will move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made, carried. Uh, request to appear before the council and ordinances. Ordinance 249, an ordinance relating to local sales and use tax. First reading. This is because of passing the referendum at the recent election. Now we have to adopt ordinance 249. And I have had questions pertaining to the sales tax and as to whether the vendors on... At the roll-ins, yeah, legally, they have to charge sales tax. And it will probably fall to us to make sure that they are, because it's in our own interest.
So it's the... Any vendor that comes in.
Any vendor that comes in, yeah.
I guess the way I was understanding it is when a vendor comes in, that, yes, they do have to file sales tax. I would say it's their responsibility to be... To fi... I mean, to file.
It is, it is their responsibility.
And they probably... How are we...
The state really is the...
The state will actually get them.
Yeah.
So they will have...
And I think they were down here two years ago and actually, uh, caught a couple of people that were... I mean, that's probably what it's gonna take.
It's not, yeah, it's not us policing.
No, we don't have to.
I don't, I don't know.
We wouldn't have to.
I talked to Jeff today, and I think a lot of these vendors have been communities that have a sales tax.
Yeah, yeah. So they're seven point eight, so they would have to...
Yeah.
And they should, um, they will get a notice from the state, from Department of Revenue, that they must collect that sales tax beginning on April 1st. So they will be aware, they will know it.
So that's basically just to...
I would think it would be the moment, uh, sales that occur that probably are gonna...
Yeah, that's probably gonna be something, and it's not, yeah.
Yeah, like those food vendors, most of them include it in their price.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can only get away with avoiding the state's sales tax. We're reporting for so long.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 249.
First reading, all right, I'll second it, motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made, carried.
Oh, did you want to set a date for the hearing? I was prepared to, uh, some of the team meeting.
Yes, yes. Include that.
Can we talk about this after we approve it?
Sure.
Just a quick question, does Sunsets for 15 years or sooner if we pay it off?
Yeah. And then you can renew it, but you have to go basically through the same process.
Right, if we found another, if we found value in this, and Allison's Park is up and running, and we're paid off in 12 years, and we say, "Hey, we're paid off." Here's another idea, let's, uh, go through the same process.
Yeah.
Okay. And now we require another vote then?
As I understand it. Because when I testified at the state, uh, pitched it, there were cities down there that were going for the second round.
Well, they'll say, like, right now, they're on pause and all of that stuff. So it's really not gonna affect us, because we already have it.
Right.
Going forward, nobody really knows how that process is. They're gonna try to simplify the whole thing, so there is no more of that testimony and everything else, so that things easier, but that's what we felt, right?
50 years. Yeah, I'll see how I feel. Resolution 2024-24, providing for the sale of 800... Well, we can't do that until time gets here, I'm sorry. Police chief's written monthly report.
2024, October 1st, a report for Henderson Police Department. We had, uh... Three, four assist the public, five annual complaints, nine assist other agencies, three that were medical, one arrest, and custodial transport. Seven traffic citations, 19 traffic warrants, 12 traffic details, directed patrol of 95, five info, civil matters, all other causes of 28. Serious incidents, we had picked up a warrant, that was the one, uh, up on top there. Three citations for speed, citations for DAR, two citations for no valid license, and a citation for no proof of insurance. The car is in the shop right now. I think it might be done at the end of this week, so we didn't get it in earlier. Because originally, they told us to do it first, they weren't, they were gonna work on it till then, because December 1st. But they already have it in there, and it sounds like it's gonna be done hopefully by the end of this week. So, so we have the new car for the night Thanksgiving. So that's holding good. All of us have been, oh, Dan hasn't been through the shoe house training. Um, the shoe house training is advanced training for, um, working inside buildings, if you're searching buildings, for looking for suspects. But it also covers our night shoot qualifications and our cold weather qualifications too. So it's included with our normal certifications. That's probably about it.
All right, thank you, sir. So SEH is not here.
They're not here, they're up there.
Yeah.
So this is a application payment number that I, um, introduced down to about 1% of the payment. So there's gonna be 50,000, like, unattainage that we'll pay in December. And I would probably estimate another 10 on top of that, just in case if there's other quantities that come in. So that, for this time.
That's for June.
Yep, true. And then that could be with bills, that's fine. And then Chris wanted to, well, he did bring, um, the agreement for the AT project, um, for the city to take a look at, uh, for engineering construction. Yes, down here on payment, estimated fee is subject to, we obviously see about $36,000, is what we're here to pull for this. If that is okay, we can take all of that, and raise it to 900,000. On design, which would basically follow this to some extent. I think the path forward is gonna be for, uh, SEH to start working on this and bring it to the trail meeting on the 10th. I think there's one coming up on December 10th with the, uh, with the nonprofit Trails Board. And then they might have some recommendations that would come back then at December meeting to talk about that stuff. And then Chris can, um, hopefully get everything done before early January, and then get it scored, you know, February, March timeframe. So he would think that we'd get started as soon as possible, um, getting County Road 6, maybe accelerating and getting that pavement in early spring.
So this is to do, design the trail for the city?
Yeah.
And extend the levee, extend the trail from the levee to, uh...
Which people?
Oak and... Oak and Fifth Street.
So then do we have to have it go out for bids to do the work, or does Matheson?
No, it'll be separate.
Oh, separate, okay.
And there'll be some up in the air, depending on who's gonna run that. It could be the county, or it could be the city with SEH construction. It's basically gonna depend on timing. But SEH would be the ones who would take care of, uh, time one.
All right, well, to move forward, I'll make a motion.
What's the motion for?
To authorize SEH to design, begin the...
Do the engineering.
Engineering for the trailhead and the trail that links.
To the County Road 6 trail.
Yes.
Where is Oak Street?
What's that?
Where is Oak Street?
Oak Street is at the corner of the park, it's your intersection. That's just encompassing, it doesn't mean that the trail goes there.
No, that's, it'll be a little, looks like a crosswalk, kinda where it is now.
It connects right up to the trail.
It already is.
Starting to go into the Hummer.
Okay, okay.
Did we ever figure out, did they come back to us, is, can we use that DNR grant?
Yes.
We can.
Yeah, the second part, it looks like there should be. I think the way it's gonna have to work goes, that will be a separate, um, contract outside of this one. And we're gonna have to wait and see what actually can be used. Because we don't wanna, we don't wanna combine those two, because then you're not gonna be able to use both grants at the same time, you wanna separate that stuff. That, Chris is gonna have to go into that with DNR to really nail that down. But it looks like we should be able to do some of that. There is a match to that, um, which is fine, but we'll wanna see what that actual number is a little later.
So by the end of June, the County Road 6 trail should be functioning.
Yeah.
And open for traffic, so... The link, makes sense, we'll see.
As long as it's a dry...
Somebody second your motion?
No. Motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye.
Let's see here, he was gonna touch a little bit on Allison's Park. I think the intent is to have that project go after this project, probably starting in the fall of '25, probably October. I think that would be appropriate, it won't take long, maybe a month.
It won't.
We might have to quit the season a couple of weeks early to get that in, but I think that's fine. I'd like to get a whole other season out of it anyhow, get back in there.
Yeah, it'd be best if we did it in the spring. And gives us some time.
So he'll probably come back then with that proposal sometime early, next year, '25. We have to see what they're, what they're thinking on timing for that, but it should be, um, after here. Um, let's see, I can move on, Jason won't be here tonight. We do need to set a utility assessment hearing for the December meeting. Um, I have preliminary assessments here, isn't well more than we expect. There's 20,000 on here right now, this should drop quite a bit to less than 15. And I wanted to confirm, we're, we're gonna send out these letters of assessing these utilities for those that are three periods overdue or $300 overdue. Is that still where we want to be?
It's traditionally what we've done?
Traditionally, yeah, um, it usually holds in about 15,000 when it would be assessed. Do you do that with...
So, people could be asked to, to assess one?
Yes, so once I send a letter, so probably half of these we send money in right away. And then this will be preliminary, once I do utilities again on January 2nd or so, that'll be the final number that'll show once it's assessed. But this would be the, this would be the maximum number of people at this point, uh, because of the newest requirements that we have to give them earlier.
Sure.
And I would probably, uh, set that, um, hearing for the December 18th meeting, probably after, um, following the, uh, ordinance 249 public hearing.
Sounds good, sure you understand.
Each line is a, a water, the, behind the net, water.
Right, same, paid by the first.
Each line, each line is a, a, an address of residence or a service.
Yeah. Goes on their taxes, we get our money.
So typically, and just, just for you, um, the three periods overdue, those are the ones that we're tracking every month for shut offs. That's at least 90 days overdue. And then it follows two, one, and then current, and you're told that on the left side. And so right now, it shows just under 21,000, that should come down to about $6,000, um, to about 15,000 that are actually assessed.
And that's just collected as part of the property taxes, correct? And that's an annual thing?
Yes, yeah. A motion?
Oh.
Good job. Motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made, carried.
Uh, next I have Henderson mine spirits, they're like some of these, that approval, I can send that out, and those guys, anyway?
I will still move.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye. Motion made, carried.
Um, NADI locked those, they're working on the office. FEMA, we are still talking to them, trying to work out, um, what, what they want covered and how we're approving all that. We'll be talking to Electric Pump and FEMA over the next few days, again, the next couple of weeks. Chase believes he should be done with all of his work by the end of this month, so we can get those submitted to FEMA, um, for some reimbursement. But other than that, we're kinda just maintaining right now. Let's see, Allison's Park, um, talking about that. Audit budget by the beginning, planning, um, that's started. I did have a very short meeting today, which was regarding that utility rate study. We are, I would probably suggest that we have a work study session for that, um, sometime before, uh, the December meeting, uh, before the actual rates are set. I don't think technically they would even need to be set until the January meeting if, if needed, but I think getting ahead of that to talk about those scenarios would be, would be pretty important. Probably between December 4th and the 11th, sometime in there. I think she was thinking December 4th would be the best date for her, um, it's a Wednesday. If, if you wanna do that.
Works for me.
Yeah. Fine for me.
Need a motion instead of meeting?
Yeah, that'll be a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion, December 4th, 7.
Second. Can we do it at 6?
We can do it at 6, if you're willing.
Do you guys, what time do you guys all get off work?
You know, I...
Yeah, we can do it at 6, I can.
I'll let you know.
I could do it there, too.
All right, then it's at least 7 for 6.
Yeah, we can make that time.
Okay. Did I make that a motion?
I did.
Did you make a motion, was there a second?
I did, I did, okay.
Motion made, seconded, all fair or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, and then just some grant stuff that, uh, we're still working on. We did wanna update on trees, um, seen 105 trees down this month, uh, and working on submitting for reimbursement. We should have, uh, just about 10,000 coming back from DNR for the first grant, that should be here in a couple of days. And then the 57,000, um, was submitted last week, that one might take a little bit longer to come back, but hopefully it should come in in December. The workforce housing building grant is going through, we signed contracts, now we just need to, um, pay in there, please. Those are, I don't think those are paid by the city, that shouldn't be paid by a contractor, I think it's $8,000. Don't think I did anything else, supermotes.
Well, we could talk about trees. Sure you understand, you know?
Well, I called, uh, our, I think we just replaced a bunch of trees, and last night at the park, we talked about people that want trees, right?
What do we do with people who don't want trees?
Well, I think we put them down in the park, but I think that's on a public property. So Allison's Park, or wherever.
I guess kind of our question, Keith, was, how many should we allow not to want trees?
What if nobody wants a tree, what if we, you know, I think, we kinda said, you know, it's not really a problem until we know how many people say they don't want a tree.
Okay, I can't, I can't believe...
I understand.
I think it's gonna depend on what kind of tree it is.
And if there's a symmetry to a tree, a tree, a tree, well, I don't want a tree, and then tree, and then we're trying, we're impacting the intent of a nice boulevard. It might be, you know, tree, 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 no tree, 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 no tree, no tree.
Does it matter? I mean...
Well, Tim's opinion is that these are adjacent homeowners to where these trees go. So I don't know, that's on, we might have to, first, I think, determine how many people say, "I don't want a tree."
Well, if the tree is particular, let's say it's next to, I mean, if it was, because we did 20 feet off, so let's say...
And put the tree back on the yard.
Right, so...
We determined that...
It's our, we're talking about the boulevard, which is the city, so, sorry, I might be saying the wrong thing here, but too bad, you, this is city, we took a, a dead tree down, we will be replacing it with a tree. Correct? Is that what you're thinking, or?
Yeah, I think it all depends on how many people say, "I just don't want a tree." I may like be able to be compromised by saying, "I'll tell you what, what is it, you don't wanna rank here? Pick from this list of trees that don't have any, they don't shed, they're gonna fall." I think if you let people run crazy, then you might be...
I know, I don't wanna have a, a serious issue trying to manage, uh, an unguarded project.
Yeah.
But now, Terry, will you weigh in on, uh, appropriate trees?
Yeah.
We've got the list of trees, yeah.
And for specific places, did he weigh in on that?
As far as that boulevard trees?
No, like, what's appropriate for a boulevard?
We have appropriate down like that.
Yeah, he, um, I can send it to you, but he basically wrote down what DNR's gonna allow for trees, and then put in those requirements for that tree, you know, can't be hiked and stuff like that. So we'll have to work out, and that's gonna actually be part of the process here over the winter, is determining, you know, we're gonna go back the right way, 10 feet would be the maximum, essentially. We'll have to see what that looks like, you know, looking at underground utilities and where things are. We'll map that all out and get that recorded over the winter. Yeah, there's, there's a couple of questions, um, I've had three people call me and say, "Hey, they took a tree down, that's great, I don't want another one back." So, and I haven't said anything to anybody yet, because I'm probably looking for some guidance on if that's even gonna be allowed, because I'm, I'm being very careful to let everybody know that these are adjacent homeowners. It's not the tree that...
Well, if we're putting it on the boulevard, you're, you're correct, I mean, it's a right of way, it's not, or they are, there are probably more appropriate trees for a person like that, like an ironwood, which doesn't get very big very fast. And it doesn't disrupt utilities, and they, they stay small, they're long-lived, but they're really...
I think kind of what the park, park board talked about was, let's see how many don't want trees?
Right.
And then try and soothe them by saying, "Hey, we know you don't want a tree, but here's what you could pick from, because we do have to put a tree down."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Call it a compromise.
I mean, I'd hate to plant a tree and then not have them take it.
Well, I'll take care of it, yeah.
Trouble for it.
That's not what we're talking about here. The two is, once we identify where these trees are gonna go, and once we pick what trees we want, we need to let these people on these yards know, "Hey, you're getting this type of tree. And here's what it's watering, just like when we split sap down, here's what your watering program needs to be." Because I think, right, when you say, "The tree we lose, we got, we pay for."
Do, is there anything in the country, in the grant for, like, water bags for the trees?
Yes, that would be...
Do you put ships and stuff down, or maybe hay or something to everyone show?
Matt, he quoted the price that includes all of that and water, when he puts everything back in.
Okay.
So all the trees, Lisa, did all have water bags and...
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure that Matt did, it's actually the same.
And just for asking, so what were their reasons why they do not want a tree? Did they have a reason?
No, heck, all, all three of them that I've talked to just basically said, "I don't want a tree." There was no real reason for it, other than probably don't wanna deal with that, so they don't want a tree.
And me as a homeowner, I'm like, "Hey, I get a free tree."
I would be too.
Are these gonna be like a 2-inch?
Yeah, it's a 2 to 3-inch, and only, uh, 20 sides stood down, 20 yards, because they can go, there's...
Well, you have two, two and a half inch, plant on a tree, which is a nice tree.
Good list, but like you said, what we can get at the time.
Yeah.
I lost all those trees, a little bit yellow.
Well, I should make that order, I have to talk to Matt and see what these costs are gonna be, but we should make that order fairly soon.
Right.
Because I don't know what it's gonna look like in the spring.
They just released the seedling sale for the DNR, so...
Yeah.
So the list that, um, Terry gave you guys, was that off of the DNR's list?
Yeah.
It was pretty detailed, I mean, he had fast growing, slow growing, how tall they were.
Was that all his handwriting on that sheet?
Yeah.
I thought so, yeah, he did a really nice comprehensive job.
Just roughly, how many varieties is there to choose from?
25.
Oh, there's quite a few then, okay.
So Tim will put together 6 of these, 8 of these, 10 of these, whatever.
Gotcha, okay. Gotcha, okay.
The other question was, I've had some people say, hey, can I pick the tree species? I've been told by others who've been going through this, that that's probably not the greatest idea, can turn into a pretty big.
Yeah.
Mostly because, and I think Troy has, we talked a bit about it yesterday, you can, you know, if you're gonna do five with some and seven of others, if people wanna pick a tree, that's fine, but you have to have limits on how many they can pick out of that amount, so if there's five trees, and five people pick, that should.
Okay.
If you've got five spruce trees, and then five people calls, say, I want spruce, six person calls, sorry, that's, you don't have to do a tree.
Do we have spruce trees?
I guess through that, okay.
Because it's almost Christmas.
I could manage that if you wanted to, but how, how much?
Probably wanna mix them up.
I think that, I think it would be a good option, though, for the people to say, I don't want a tree.
Yeah, definitely.
Hey, here's our choices that we have, you're gonna get one. What are your objections? And, yeah, I know what your objections are, I can say, well, perfect deal, we'll rake here as well.
Yeah, a few leaves, don't grow very fast, don't give it away.
I think T and M put in, it was like that Ginkgo tree in their backyard, that grows so fast, it's so pretty, and yeah, minimal, minimal mess.
That is on the list, it's one of those.
What kinda tree is that?
It's like Ginkgo, it's really pretty.
Bears on it too, probably.
No, I don't think that one.
No, I don't take this list.
Oh, yeah.
I should have run it, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I didn't.
Alright, well, we exhausted that topic.
Yes.
We have a couple of appointments to make, Streets and Equipment, Parks Trails Tree Committee.
Yeah, these are the ones that you can get, so.
Troy, do you wanna, are you vowing into the Parks Trails Trees Committee, so?
Yeah, Friday.
Alright, and how about Streets and Equipment? Want to learn about Streets and Equipment?
Sure.
Okay. I need a motion to approve an appointment of Troy to Streets and Equipment and Parks Trails Trees Committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All the favorites signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, motion made and carried.
One more thing, the parks, Terry Bovee did it on us last night, but he'd like off it.
Yeah, and Tim did check, Jeff and Lucy are both on it.
Okay.
And they were both here and indicated an interest, Jeff Descharm and Lucy.
Well, they're on it.
They've never on it before.
One other thing from last night, too, is we've got all these groups, Hummingbird, I don't know, Henderson Rec, that are all pulling a different rope, and maybe their efforts could be collaborated to take a bigger bite out of one project. And then, Randy had a great point, if you get 20, if they all come here to a meeting, and you got 25 people in here, and everyone's, it makes no sense of anything, but if each of these individuals wanted, we invite, invite someone to come sit with us.
For Parks.
As an advisor, or the Parks, was it the Parks?
Yeah, for the Parks Committee.
Well, you know, we did that meeting last year with the non-profits, and that, that's a nice idea, to pull a representative in for everyone, to talk with the Parks, to find out, you know, about their plans, or you've got, you've got the splash pad, you've got...
There might be duplicating efforts, huh, sir?
Well, and now, we can segue into, you know, it's been our intention to, at some point, add another position, that would basically support Tim, and that person could, part of the duties, could be to keep track of what all these groups are doing, and meet with them, and, and basically make sure there isn't a duplication, and also, some of the things that we're, we're doing, you know, like the trail extension, things like that, someone that can keep a, a close eye on, on things like that. So, we're thinking about starting to advertise for it as an assistant position, and probably bring somebody on, what are you thinking, April?
Yeah, April.
I think it's an awesome idea, because I think Tim's plate is overfilled.
I do, too. Give him some breathing room. So, great thoughts.
I have one other question.
Deep thoughts?
Looking at the administrative notes, this thing about the DNR tells us we're responsible for clearing the boat landing, is that always been the case?
That? I was gonna say.
And I know that, the reason I ask the question is, I know that it's come up in years past when I've sat in here, when I was sitting there signing up, they, John came in and said, you know, his boat goes up, and he can't land the boat by himself, and, and we talked about it, and someone indicated that they've talked to the DNR.
Yeah, so, I, I did get in touch with the guy who's out in New Ulm, who takes care of these things, and he sent me a contract from 30 years ago, so the city has been responsible for all of the deep and boat landing, they did not wanna touch that at all right now. I did tell him, you know, it's probably a smart thing to talk about some future financing help for the city of Henderson, simply because, once you get so far out, it's very difficult to clear that.
Right, we don't have a piece of equipment that could safely go down that ramp any further. Bruce has cleared it as far down as he dares to go, but rather than put that front end water into 12 feet of river water.
And that's when we go forward, and we have trails and.
Well, this, this comes up every time the river goes down to this level, especially after we've had a flood event, that silts everything out, and I, from, from what I hear, there's a sandbar forming that may even complicate it further in the future, so thank you, DNR, for being so, because I, I think St. Peters is unusable, I think a lot of them are unusable right now, and the, the solution is, to hire Bane to go down there with his big backhoe, then he can do it. I was just hoping that we could circumvent that, and have the DNR show, hire someone to go around to their boat landings, but.
Is it city property? What's that, is that city property, or is it fishing law class, or what is it?
That, it might be unknown property. It probably got forfeited for taxes 75 years ago. It probably is technically city property, but if we want it cleared, and there will be a lot of activity now, until it freezes, well, even after it freezes over, but right now, there's a lot of people that wanna fish it, because there's already been some big walleyes taken out, and right below the bridge is a scour hole that, who knows what it even is this year after the flood we had, so.
Well, I don't know if we need to be a planning place now, but definitely something I think they wanna think about, because if Allison's Park, and I know catching a catfish isn't the most monkey, but it's still something that our community can offer, hey, look at this, we have beautiful Minnesota River Valley, and you can catch a 50-pound catfish, which is so exciting.
And ordinarily, we don't have a problem, because we can keep it clear, but when it gets down in this low, you just don't dare.
And I would imagine, if the river changes all the time, if there's a sandbar forming, it's, it's just gonna continue until it carves it past.
So, but if we want, we can send Bane down there with the backhoe, because he got the backhoe down, doesn't he?
Yeah.
And, and clear it.
Is that a cost we wanna incur at this time, going into spring, or do?
Well, the only trouble is, in spring, it's not an issue, because the river's higher and it's clear. The issue is always in the late fall, when the river drops. It's probably been an issue for about a month.
I think it's just even an issue for now, I don't know if it is an issue.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I.
We're talking $600, $800?
Yeah, something like that, I would think.
I think we should wait.
Okay, one minute. That's fine, but, yeah, it would be nice if the DNR.
Somebody gets a spring, see if.
They, they have in the past, shown up with a big backhoe, and sent them around to all the landings, that's what I was hoping for this fall.
Let's wait till spring and continue to communicate with them, and see if they can get the, we got a contact.
Yeah, he's, he seems to be open to, I wouldn't say renegotiating in that contract, but then they some of that to allow for some actual systems, it's not just numbers, and I don't think they're doing anything right now.
So, just.
We can't charge a fee before, huh?
DNR, I don't think so. Drive. Drive. Run everything else out of those.
Are we at city council?
Sure.
Can we change the stop sign on top of Church Hill to a yield sign, since nobody stops at it? And, and where you used to go straight ahead, now it's a drive over curb, so it's not a flat.
The trouble is, you have to, it's the odd occurrence, and that's why, and this happened years and years ago, when.
Joe Polk.
Joe Polk. When Joe built that house, he convinced the council that he should have the right of way going up the hill, because otherwise, the only safe way to do it is to, for that, that owner, that, whoever's in that house, to turn the corner and come back and go in, which is the safe way to do it, because if you come clipping up that hill without that stop sign there, you're gonna get, somebody, inevitably, if somebody's not careful, there's gonna be collision, that's why it's there. It's not an ideal situation at all.
Well, no, and I'm not suggesting removing it, I'm just saying, change it to a yield versus a stop.
So, I'm stopping there.
Well, nobody stops there, that's what I'm like.
Well, I do, I do, because I know why it's there, and I'm always afraid somebody's gonna clip up the hill, and I'm gonna wail.
Are you talking about the library?
No, 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 at the top of, at the top of the hill.
Curved to the right.
Yeah.
So, the stop sign is coming this way?
Yes.
And then you take a left down the hill?
Yes, but if you're coming up the hill, and you're going straight into the driveway, you have no controls on you whatsoever, or.
Everything worse.
Put up a.
Worse now with that drive over curb.
Yeah, must turn right. I don't know. I just, I don't know if we open ourselves to any liability, after all this time. It, it, it's such an odd situation.
Yes, I agree, and I just had the request, that's why I brought it up.
I, I, I just think at some point, boom, the yield sign controls like a stop sign if somebody's coming up, so, I don't know, everybody think hard about it.
What is the, how do you go about changing something like that? Is that someone's changed body?
We just change it.
But what was the, I mean, because nobody stops at it, that's why they wanna change?
Yeah, I mean, people who live, who live up there say, you know, nobody stops at that stop sign, can it just be?
It used to be a yield sign, and then they changed it to a stop sign.
Yeah, when did we change?
I forget how many years ago that was. And I always thought it was odd, but now, after you explaining of people going up into the driveway, I get it, but.
Are people gonna yield, though, you know, if it's a yield sign? If they're not stopping for a stop sign, then.
No, you're just making somebody, you're just making somebody responsible for the car, sorry, get in here.
Yeah, maybe you could put a sign up the hill that says, watch for, you know, oncoming traffic, whatever, there's probably.
You know, I always stop for that thing, because I'm, I, I always figured somebody's gonna come up the driveway, to the driveway and whack me, but.
Pay a closer attention.
I know, yeah, and now with the, the lines painted, it's much easier to slow down and stay on your side.
Oh, the, the center line?
Mm-hmm.
Well, everybody was complaining, because they thought it was too narrow, well, stay within the lines.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we can think on that.
Alright, can we, any of the bills?
Yes, sir.
Alright. The bills have been reviewed?
Yeah, didn't see anything unusual.
Okay.
Me neither.
The city of the sewer, sorry, is that the wastewater per gallon?
Per gallon.
Per thousand gallons, there's a rate?
And then per second.
Pretty consistent figure, I would presume?
That, over the summer, it was quite high, because of infiltration and flooding, it was, I mean, several.
Didn't you think of that?
Yes, it did. The variance.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills, and based upon the fact that we're holding some for payment, I would ask that, until the end of this year, nobody buy anything unless they go through Tim.
I never buy anything.
I don't either.
Not in the story. And I'll make that a motion.
Alright, motion made.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded, all, whoever's saying aye. All, motion made.
Sweet job. I don't think Todd's gonna make it.
Has he, has he messaged you, is he getting closer?
What happened last time? Oh, we were walking out, and he was walking in.
Yeah, it was the flood.
It's always something, you know, we need to stop scheduling him down here. Maybe he can do it as a phone call.
Well, I have new business I'd like to discuss, I just, I have asked, as we were driving, walking, I don't know who, I talked to Terry about.